I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under that the independence of which it calls its own.
Roll call. Commissioner McCowen.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Hyden.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn, here. Commissioner Rushing, here. Commissioner Greatham, here. Commissioner Bone, here. Item three additions to the lease.
Chairman, it looks like we've got one, two, three, four, well, three additions and one deletion. So let's make the three A become, it's like our common S, so three A can become S and B can be a T and C can be a better T.
Okay.
And then we'll delete the, in the formulation, common update, which is.
What an A. You got a motion, you have a second section. All favor. Aye.
Aye.
So move. Court. All favor. Aye. The main, not minuses, previous meetings, A through C.
I would like to make a motion to approve the President's amendment to the twenty twenty, nineteen twenty twenty question.
Right. Discussion. Favor. Aye. No proclamations, consent agenda.
Chairman, at this time, I move to approve item seven A, seven F, on the consent agenda.
Court. Um, discussion. All favor. Aye. Court's standing committee, um. Commissioner Bone.
I, yeah, no, I don't.
Commissioner Dunn. Okay. Commissioner Greatham.
I'm gonna take a pass. See thing to pass.
I'll take a pass.
Commissioner Hyden.
Take a pass.
Take a pass. Some citizens wishing to address the board. And the person, permission, by the. Who take over? No, they're already gonna take it off. There's no motion. And item eleven B.
This time, I'd like to move to approve September twenty twenty county dispersals in amount of thirty-three million nine hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Court. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bone. Item C, the animal control system.
Time ago, we made a motion to approve the animal control system, providing the experience of.
Court. Discussion. Roll call. Sorry. Pick the bike.
Bike. Eight thirty, yeah, thirteen seven.
Okay. Oh, okay. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item D.
Uh, Chairman, at this time, I move to reappoint Dan K. C. economic development alliance director to the Bronfield redevelopment forty-four director for a three-year term expiring ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Support. Discussion. All favor. Aye. Second, need to build a majority appointment. Mr. Chairman, I hope to appoint Dan Strout, the one of the directors of Santa Barbara County, for their remainder of a three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, July twenty-two. Support. Discussion. All favor. Aye. Post vote. Item now, committee, um, on the whole point.
At this time, I move to appoint Antoinette Tucker, member-at-large for the community mental health board for the remainder of a three-year term expiring March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Court. Discussion. All favor. Aye. G. Chairman, I do. Health Department. And Human Services Board, Reverend Thomas Seppel, District One, for a three-year term expiring ten thirty-one. Harper, Danke, District Five, for the remainder of a three-year term expiring at thirty-one. Court. Discussion. Favor. Aye. Item H, the two thousand twenty-one.
This time, I move to approve the Medicare Advantage renewal plan, option five, effective January first, twenty twenty-one.
Court. Discussion. All favor. Aye. Aye. I, the contract approval.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to approve the service agreement of sanctuary services, the people services, the thirty thousand, the five, um, one, one, twenty-nine, twelve, thirty-one.
Second. Discussion.
I would say at least ten years. Yes.
Say, basically, my. Uh. Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item J, the two thousand twenty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I move to approve the twenty twenty childcare fund budget in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Court. Discussion. Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item K, the coronavirus relief local government grant.
This time, I've moved to approve the coronavirus relief local government grants program in the amount of one million one hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Court. Uh, question for you, Carrie, I know there's a couple of that down there. What would this be specific?
So this grant, or this crowdfunding, this is what the state did to replace county's revenue sharing, maybe that we should pursue in August. So there are restrictions, I know we can spend it, and it has to be used for our public response, however, public safety payroll and public health payroll are qualified, so we can use it. Table posting that they are required because it's assumed that the resources angels have to.
What's the stat on first of the month?
Um, we want to again, we got nine hundred and eighteen thousand, so this is what we got. So there were actual funds there that we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Billy. It felt like a silly question, but it has to be combined, December third, or?
Yes, all the funds have to be submitted by, well, you don't have to spend the money for any, if it's any supplies in order, we have to physically receive them.
I guess my question is, is there any, well, spending that amount, money that amount?
Yeah, we got more than the marketable that we have to purchase, and all our supplies.
Roll call. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Uh, in, um, two thousand twenty-one. Chairman, I vote to approve this new year, one twenty-one grant program grant. Application in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand. Court. Uh, discussion. All favor. Aye. Aye. Chairman, and.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve this year, twenty twenty, it will refer memorial justice assistant grant agreement in the amount fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars.
Court. Discussion. Favor. Again, master. Right, I wanted to ask Greg, if you're aware of this, or anybody, um, at this particular point, I don't believe our deputies have body cams. Would this be the first set of body cams, and obviously, this is enough by everybody, I'm not gonna get into that, because trial period, does anybody know anything to call?
Did, go ahead, Carrie.
So, um, they don't need to have body cams for all of their deputies, and this grant is just a piece of the towards of it, they have several other different funding sources that.
My understanding is that body cams are not that expensive, in itself, the software and the collection process is extremely expensive.
Yep, they, um, are currently are, um, with active, the sheriff's offices researching the ways of storage and managing the data.
We're providing eight five thousand, eight, uh, L T P A grant funding as well.
With that, okay. Uh, anything else? All favor. Aye. Aye. And, and, the residential stuff.
I would like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one grant agreement.
Court.
Aye.
Title. Something. Chairman, I vote to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, five, each child, apparently, the grant agreement, twelve thousand, eighty-five thousand, two thousand eight thousand. Court. Oh, or. Sorry. Duke was around when it rolls. Um, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
It's like we're.
This time, I move to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-one grant agreement, Michigan, digit, Defense Commission, in the amount of two million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, eighty-four cents. Authorize the addition of a part-time custodian, one, a full-time assistant public defender, a full-time senior public defender, as provided by the grant agreement.
Questions? Carrie, because we started this, and you're correct me from now.
Um, we started bringing employees up in areas.
And then, um, cost comparisons, I know the state had, you know, reimbursement change, so. Where does this stack up from? Is it too early to tell?
So the county's local share, um, they determine what the county's local share is when the statute is put into place. And it has kind of sunsetted that and it goes up in inflationary number everywhere. And the rest of the costs are on the right. Um, you know, this year we've seen that, you know, the county has our local share, which is what we used to pay at court, when the terms minus what we collect for university terms. We're finding that there aren't as many, um, collections this year and to, you know, so. Same way it's trying, but we did have to follow.
Anything else? Push that.
Yeah, this one put down there. That's the part I'm.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McCann.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Great Town.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
And chiefly the impressive community term. Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the requested changes in the court manning table as follows.
Yeah.
R.
R.
I'm sorry.
This is how I would like to make a motion to approve their request of trust giving, for the guarantee of eliminating the victim's rights supervisor, left office management division, if any, open the victim's rights provider, full time.
Court. Discussion, all favor.
Aye.
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 Chairman, both court and table two.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the requested changes in the court manning table as follows. Increase a part-time juvenile counsel from part-time to full-time. Eliminate a logistics coordinator position from the day treatment night watch manning table. Eliminate two part-time courts in the city court manning table. Create a full-time senior court position in the circuit court manning table. Eliminate per three position. Create an administrative service coordinator position. Move a part-time court long position from criminal probation to the childcare law.
Court. And I would like to add that this did not come to the meeting, meeting, meeting. Uh, but the, like, McPhillip is in the audience, so this is the first time you've seen this. If you have a question, please. Assume the.
Um, Kevin, so.
The only question I got is funding. We have their.
So the additional, the maximum additional cost is when everyone is at the top step and assuming everyone has the choices. So once those positions are filled, then we know what the true back to the one budget is. But, um, those abilities certainly at less than the top step, it could potentially be budgeted for next year.
Here is the, the net cost or the net, yeah, the net cost looks like twenty thousand, three eighty-one. Is that based on the way at the top page?
Yes.
So chances are, they won't be at the top page, they will come in, do this figure.
Yes, for, for twenty-one, it should come in less than that.
And then, as it increases, it will come out of their butt.
Correct.
Anything else? All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
This time, I move to adopt resolution twenty eighteen, authorize a Perry Hepburn Administrator Controller to sign an interim land contract for three one eight, Grand River Avenue, four.
Court. Discussion. What this ultimately does is it gives Larry Jones opportunity to go the next steps, see things as you all know. Kind of be active, assume your name, always get the agency, this is the first career. And he has to be more, I know more in the later days, they know that that's a participation coming together.
Mr. Chairman, I have, just like to point out that the faults going are, I may be designing these facilities, so if I need to stay in the building. That we have offices down at the ground and we can rent for, or just landmark, and maybe we have a facility of.
Do we need a motion for that?
I believe. I don't, I mean.
Uh, I don't know if he's gonna have a shame.
Uh, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item T. Chairman, I would motion to adopt resolution twenty-two. Appropriated taxes. Court. Who's that? Discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, resolution. Twenty-two.
Uh, instead of like making a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty market, let me develop the certification.
Court. Discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Administrator.
First of all, I think about joining the, the, the motion to find this director. We were gonna do that. As part of that motion and next year's budget, we are, we are in the coming coming department that will present the twenty-one budget. Um, the twenty-one general budget will come to that when we're done with this meeting. And we are going to schedule the public hearing and potentially the adoption of that one. As, um, part of that, we are, well, it's not part of the budget, but we are working through the year's funding, um, agreement that we achieved this evening. Our first set of reporting is due on that, and I don't, so most of this time is dedicated to the very tedious process of going through, um, and submitting our expenditures for that grant. Um, and I think that was already mentioned that we do have to have all these forms, it's not defining them this year. As part of that, we are making a lot of general fund, uh, budget adjustments, because all these funds are separate fund outside of the general fund. So when you see budget adjustments this year, they're going to be a lot larger than usual, um, probably several stages of, um, I think if this whole is, um, decided, it's. Just budget adjustments are not that often, but just do the question. All comments. Uh, earlier today, I.
Carrie, could you talk into the microphone?
Um, yep, I, I am, but I can talk louder.
Thank you.
Uh, earlier today, I met with the medical examiner's office in the area, we made a proposal to prioritize some of our medical examiner services. Currently, we do have an interim contract with, um, the Spitzler Pediatrics Group, um, for to do some of the services we do. We're, um, we can make a goal for a proposal where all of our staff, um, the executive one, would be managed through this, um, Spitzler Pediatrics Group. And they would provide all the medical examiner services for us at our institution. So if we, um, we, we will have. Our home system upgrade is very close to the complete employees that are being trained this week on the home system, some of the shares. Um, the cut over is supposed to happen tomorrow, as we saw that, um, uniforms may be, and it will be not making through the public council. But hopefully, by the end of this, I will, I will be sure that we will be able to do this. Um, and last, based on some recent legislation that passed, if you were to, we'll be able to go back to virtual meetings, um, at least through the end of this year. And then for twenty twenty-one, virtual meetings are allowed under, if you meet the setup criteria. So my question to you is, would you like to, um, go back to full focus? Or would you want to continue to?
I hate wearing suit for disclosure. I like, I like being when I see a guy, I agree, and I'll purchase stuff.
So.
It doesn't change. It was kind of a preparation, stable, where it's worn, um, medical.
Not lost play by a woman.
It was something that, well, I just, I just got the. That, that was, we got to say, so we'll study it and say, this is what you have to do to be virtual. Anybody with a health condition, so like if they could be, you know, say respiratory condition, and if you were exposed to COVID, be high risk area, they could just automatically stay home. Um, it may be, it can also be treated in virtual, but it's, it's. So all of your thoughts.
Let me plan standpoint, we should make sure we can, listening to the numbers today, I know we have John, just here in town. I, I want to be ready, so if, if we fall out within eighty hours of the. Yeah, the, the hybrid system we're doing tonight is, well, it's not ideal, um, it, it's, it would be better if you were in-person versus, or, or if you get one or the other. Which is a lot easier to get, because I just, uh, I don't know if it's happening in that situation. Well, maybe a. Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, a question for you. Uh, if you're not here, like, powered it in prayer and act it, it certainly will, uh, everything takes place. Yeah, they can now, it's just like they're doing it, that's the whole, what you can't do is have the prayer meeting virtual, it says it. The Neil James Act, it has to take place at a public place with a public in attendance. This law then takes it back to allowing virtual for amounts of this year. We'll get you the legal requirements to make sure that you dotted the eyes of the parties, and then you can make a decision, here is set the wrong way. If I agree with Carrie, it should be all one way or all the other, because it's kind of. Anything else? Carrie, you got anything else?
It's.
Okay, uh, just a little, you know, like, congratulations on, on that, you know, I never been worked here on a big, um, taking internal candidates, giving them the opportunity, you know, and, and pick up. Eight to ten people that have elevated and have done very well, I think it's important for employees, you know, if they do work, there's some, you know, type of, stuff, so it could, uh, it could. Uh, did it happen, Washington, period? No, I didn't, it makes the world to, uh, see about.
Court. Um, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Misleading is business. Same.
So, um, the hardest, it could be, affect the community or make a planning to just keep it pushed, I don't know how to get house people, and we just not talking about it, but if really, whatever, we, whatever direction we're gonna go, whatever I get there.
Put it on a substantial initiative, just to have some discussion involved, if you want to do that. Boy, we, we have some things that have to stick here. We currently have alternates that have not been approved by the board, that's currently have been inserted in the bylaws, but they have to be approved by the board. So we have potential alternates that come to meetings, but they're just a resident. I think the alternates, Greg Condon made out some fantastic points the other month, we need, we need to dedicate the people for this. We do need to address the alternates.
So I was asking, I know we're not, tonight, and we, so I feel like, like, we do it, we get it, that's what I was.
And keep in mind that what will tie into this will be the fact that we have the administration to rework the bylaws for parts, and administration has done that, and the city in our favor. To approve or outprove, and that's the case, we can set back the administration. Either we get.
Well, it looks to me like we either get to the revised version, or we get to the point, we think the board is serving us all. We have to, we want those. So I'm so willing to operate on this. Either direction, that I'm in, the one or the other, I'm saying, like, how I get it to the next step.
Jay, I can ask a question, because it was taken, brought back tonight. You need the motion to put it back in committee? Well, it's, it's not before committee anymore, it's before the full board. Right, so we have to go to full board next time? That's a good one, can you set it back to committee? Yeah, it has to stay at full board. So you. Because it would not, because the motion was made to table it. That, that work is, has to be reopened at full board. Double at full board. Or die at full board, right? Because right now, it's, uh, this past morning, we need a motion to come in, turn it back small, full board. No, it's tabled, it's on table. It stays out, it stays.
The next call will be.
Could there be a motion made that would remove it from the table to just eliminate it for now?
Can't do it now, it's.
Okay, that's fine.
It's, we'll get it, we'll get it.
Any other misleading business? Uh, receiving file. Mr. Chairman, this time I move to receive a file, packets that were sent to commissioners, packets that were places. Any other recommendations presented? Court. All favor.
Aye.
Go to both session.
It's time to share, like, to make more. And discussion.
Second, the discussion, great, I just got your text, you look pretty good, all things considered, too. Uh, all favor.
Aye.
Please.
Not session. Um, hey, we, we, we can clear the room and break forward. Why, actually, we have to push chasing for that, because otherwise we're back in. Turned up, turned up.
You look really good sitting on that side.
Looks pretty good over here, I might stay over here.
It's a nice spot.
The view is way better.
Probably are people at this set.